So, I just want to give a rejoinder. So, these databases that are being built within India right now, each one has to be interoperable. Okay, this is a mandatory, which means that even if the data is residing there, you can query, if you come to my database, you will be able to query their data. Okay, so it doesn't matter whether his data is somewhere there, my data is somewhere here. If you go to their database, you should be able to query my data and you should be able to get data. So, this kind of framework is being built nationally and it is expected now that you will put your heart and soul to solve problems that are relevant to India. Okay, the government is very mindful of this and you know, it is funding PMRFs and you know, giving you promotions to you know, solve more challenging problems. And the lack of data, that's the key, you know, thing that we have, you know, all in my, you know, research career, we have always worked with foreign data. Okay, so we are very excited that now we will have Indian data and the challenges of working with Indian data is very exciting. Okay, so you know, this is something which will be available in a few years to come. I mean, it will mature and then you can use your algorithm and other efforts in this direction. So, now I request our panelists to please face the audience and take questions. Please. So, the session will now be open for question and you may have realized that the order in which I allowed the, you know, speakers to present their grand challenges. When we started with Shruti, you know, she presented the structural biology, you know, view of trying to solve biology problems. Then we had Lakshmi who said foundational models and underlying computation, you know, that straddles all the domains in trying to solve problems. Then we had a specific, you know, disease or drug related thing. Then we have two persons stating similar kinds of, you know, challenges. One is bench to bedside and then Himanshu said challenges in public health. So, you see, it kind of straddles the entire domain of life science issues, right? And where each of you can contribute and solving a problem in one domain will definitely benefit the other. And unless you are able to solve it, you know, iteratively, you will not improve your solutions. Okay, with this, I leave the floor open for questions and you can go one by one. Yes.
Oh, hello, sorry, hello everyone. So, I work in the field of genome scale metabolic modeling and I would like to talk about one point or one major challenge, especially to Professor Himanshu. So, when you are talking that there are, there will be multiple databases, one major challenge that comes is that you have to extract the data and you have to like, you know, automate in making your model or anything. So, the accessibility of data and the process of automation is a very important task and in, especially in my field, I face the task that I feel like there is a lot of scope for automation and even there are also tools which can automate, but it's not easy to use by a common person. Because what tools which comes out, it's only like the person who made it will have an easier accessibility to use the tool also. So, how do you think that, you know, this automation, the process of automation will play a crucial role when you are going to increase your data and also the tool ease of usability of the tool? I think that's also something which should be emphasized upon because not all tools are easily usable.
Can I ask you to keep the questions short?
Okay, so I would like to know about your views on the ease of usability of tools and automation, especially in big data.
Okay, so in regards, with regards to genome scale modeling, if you are making context specing genome scale models, obviously the transcriptome data would be in a standard format. You'll be able to download, you can download raw data, do all the processing, pre-processing that you want to do to extract gene expression values or you can also download gene expression pre-process data which is, which is the gene expression value. Automation on ours, like I don't think you can sort of mandate automation for genome scale models. There is another project that is going to come up by BiRAC and this will take about a year or two where we would ask people to put their genome scale models online, right? In a database so that you can actually start comparing genome scale models, especially between diseases, right? Especially when you are talking about cancer being a metabolic disease, can you now compare? So, those things are happening, but I don't think right now automation at the level of a database is a possibility because everybody's genome scale model will be very specific to the question they are asking, right? So, but the, in the format of whatever, like all the formats that he is talking about and I mentioned about IBDC, they are going to be standard as they are across the world. So, they, so you'll be able to download the data and use the data.
This one's smaller, for small.
We'll take, we'll take some other questions because otherwise.
Just immediate follow-up.
Please.
Sir, how do you access the quality? Because some models have good predictive accuracy, but the ease of.
That is, that is something that a researcher should do, right? That can't be mandated that you make sure. And, and I think the quality of the, now if you are doing theoretical, like if you are doing microbial modeling, different process, different things might be applic-, different thresholds might be applicable. But if your models are being used as in bio-process engineering, that would be very different. So, I, I, you cannot put a cutoff for that this is the quality that one should have.
Okay, yeah, I request you to keep your questions short, okay?
Hello. So, I have an open question and it is about recruiting the right talent and retaining them and also about the computational schemes that we are bringing in the country. Are we making sure that we can maintain and we can keep it par with other countries also? Like IBDC that we have explained, we are, we are working with very short team and we are very far behind when it comes to NCBI or EMBL. And with respect to recruiting talents, we don't have any fellowship that provides funding for PhD for computational biologist or a bianthemologist, so.
Shall I take this question?
Yes, please. I was, I'll just add a rejoinder to that.
Yeah, so I cannot speak what has not been done because I was not in a position to influence those decisions. I can only talk for now. So, the way we are trying to handle this situation is that government salaries do not give the best of the talents, right? And the best of the systems that have been built in the country, for example, in the financial sector, have been built in private sector and the government has adopted them and then promoted them. And then there is a profit sharing mechanism that has been implemented such that it's become sustainable and they grow such that now the, our financial system is, in terms of the transaction, is the largest by far in several times than rest of the world. Government is envisaging a similar, you know, revolution that can take place in the healthcare sector. So, where the idea is that private parties would contribute to building of the infrastructure and then there will be a model in which then these things can sustainably grow by themselves. Government alone cannot do these things. Only small time fellowships for two years, three years, you cannot build world-class systems because they have to be maintained as well. Different kinds of data will ingress the system which will produce new challenges. You know, you have to rebuild the framework every few years as you will face new challenges and biological data will also spring surprises. So, lot of people are putting their minds together. I can assure you that people are working on this and you should also, you know, propose solutions and contribute as much possible.
Yeah, just to add to what you was mentioning. So, for example, you mentioned IBDC, IBDC is a very, very new system, right? So, it getting obsolete anytime soon is going to be a slightly difficult issue. But what I can say is that the government is committed to making sure that it is a sustainable product, right? And it's not a product, it's a service that the government is providing because the funding for those data sets is also coming from the government, right? So, it, it becomes, now it would be manned, now if you get any DBT or ICMA grant, right now you will be signing off saying that I'll deposit all the data in these portals. So, when that is there, then there is a responsibility from the government side or DBT or ICMA side to maintain that. So, it won't, we, it's, see, we can't say that we won't be able to build systems that are as good as NCBI. We don't, we may not need to, right? We have leapfrogged so many technologies in past where CDMA was the mobile phone technology of US, GSM was Europe. We just leapfrogged and came straight out to GSM and look at the mobile phone coverage in India. So, let's, and you guys have to, and also thinking about salaries, government salaries are not at par with industry, right? If they were, then would have been a different scenario, but they are not. So, it's more of your, your determination and effort that is required to, to sustain these kind of efforts.
So, I just want to say that all these will be, you know, put up in the public domain. There will be a consultation mechanism and then these will be agreed upon and then you would have to confirm to those. So, these things are coming slowly as things will get streamer. Thank you.
So, I have a question. So, recently, if you have read the news, ICMA has released a guideline of lifestyle changes that you should do or the things that you should avoid in order to have a better health.
Those are only guidelines, they are not statutory recommendations.
Right, right, so I'm just trying to extend that to, extend that where the research that is being done actually contributes to the, you know, well-being of the population in a way that there should be a concerted effort which were like Professor Ghosh just mentioned. For Alzheimer's disease, you have certain pathways which you have found where basically change certain, you know, lifestyle changes like repeat metabolism, peak stress, have more REM sleep which mitigates your chance of developing AD at later stage of age, at later age. So.
Can you keep your question short, please?
Yeah, should there be consortium where people contribute to making recommendations for diseases? And should it be also followed by some like ICMA to.
So, I can tell you how, why and how some of these things are coming to the public domain is because government is anticipating that it will have to spend more if such food habits continue. So, it is telling, trying to educate the population that to improve your diet and you know, so that, you know, there is less burden on public health. So, that is how these things are coming out. So, as and when such flags are raised that certain things are going to red zone, you will see certain advisories, these are not statutory, advisory recommendations that will keep coming. And if you think that Alzheimer's is one of the things that is important, as soon as the government figures out there's a lot of people going to have AD and government has to fend them, then they will immediately release such an advisory.
I think, I think this, this problem, I mean, what we were facing right now is non-availability of data. So, once the data comes in, we will have more, you know, concrete relationships with all these modules. So, health related to diet and all these things. So, those things automatically will come as the personalized healthcare system grows up in India. That is related to those. I mean, even a cancer patient will also be having certain diet charts, proper diet charts for their medication to be followed. So, those things will come up gradually. It's just started, I think, so the sun is on the horizon.
Thank you.
So, good evening. My question is to Dr. Himanshu. So, I have a concern because I was working with a small cohort of South Indian population with respect to post-menopausal osteoporosis. So, now when we categorize the patients, we have to categorize them based on their bone mineral density that is measured by the DEXA scan. Now, when we came across the, most of the DEXA scan, the, it gives them the T-score and the Z-score. So, now when, that is made in, like, you know, the preference population is Caucasian population. So, the T-score, what about the T, like, what, what do you think that Indian population? Because there, we don't have a refer-, the, the machine does not have the reference set of our population. So, based on that reference population only, it categorizes and the patient as osteoporotic or abnormal. I mean, the gold standard for diagnosing itself is only BMD measurement. Of course, there are other bone markers, but the gold standard is DEXA, so.
Did you raise this to the authorities who certify? Have you? Has he followed it up with the authorities? Then you should do that first because you need to be proactive to make sure that our certifications comply with our standards. By us.
Yeah, yeah, so, so I think, see, I, I think one of the things that one should realize is not everything that is measured in Caucasian population is bad, right? DEXA score is a standard, like nutritional charts, vaccine immunization protocols, they are globally standardized, right? So, let's not, what I was trying to convey there was that there are specific healthcare problems in India that solutions have to come from Indian populations. That doesn't mean that we shouldn't depend on research that is happening in Western countries. So, DEXA score, no, unless and until you have a evidence that DEXA score in Indian population doesn't really help the women in osteoporosis, let's not go there.
If you have concrete data where you are certain, certain that the reference that is being proposed for this country is not suitable, I think you should make a solid case to the organization, so certifying it and the manufacturers of those machines will accept them and they will incorporate in their software. But if you don't tell them, they would not know. That's the main point. So, please be proactive.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
This is a question for Shruti. You mentioned docking as one of the open problems. So, there is this tool called DiffDoc. What do you think about that, how good or bad that is? And a general question is, so, I understand that AlphaFold has probably solved quite a bit of or significant portion of the structure problems, but there are a lot of related problems like docking and many other simulations and all that. So, what is the state of the current, like current state of affairs in the field? How good or bad these AI algorithms are and how much scope there is for improvement?
So, to answer your second question first, I think right now the state of the art is anything you want to do, you start with the prediction from AI first because it is almost as good as what you would get from experiment. There are some issues like clashes, atomic clashes, so that still need to be resolved. But you generally start with that if you are doing something like molecular simulation. But like I said in my slide, there are many unsolved issues like, you don't know the process of folding, what are the biophysical characteristics of a protein that folds? That fundamental biophysical, those fundamental biophysical, physical principles have not really been characterized by AI and this have, people have actually seen. It is basically trained on existing structures, but has not learnt any new biophysics. And regarding DiffDoc, there is actually some conflict. They showed some benchmarks that showed that they do very well, but overall, I think the community is not convinced. So, the problem of protein ligand docking is still open. Similarly, there are some, many studies that explore the effect of mutation, like whether AlphaFold can predict if SNPs are deleterious or not, single point mutations. And it's not conclusive that it can predict it well. So, there are several of these open problems still available and that's why an integrative approach is also powerful here because you can, you want to combine AI with all other kinds of experimental data.
Thank you.
Another question is for you again. So, this is a very specific question from a therapeutic, therapeutic point of context. It is very important to optimize the binding of two macromolecules, say protein, antibody binding to antigen.
You mean binding affinity?
Binding affinity, you want to increase the binding affinity so that it can better utilize, that is very much important. So, many a times you have the antigen which is in many isoforms, you don't even have the crystal structure. So, my question is that in that case, how good is, is the approach to first model it using AlphaFold or something like that? And then use LLM or a diffusion model to then find what is the optimal sequence which will bind? This kind of approach is completely insilo, how good it is and how good it will be replicating in experiments?
So, one other category I left, there's two categories, right? One is disordered proteins that I covered in my talk. The other important category that AlphaFold doesn't do well on is antibody antigen complexes. And this is shown by a couple of groups. I can give you the names and papers later, later on. There is the Hadog group and there's also the National alignment group. So, what they developed is deep learning methods specifically for the case of antibody antigen docking. The reason why AlphaFold doesn't work here is because there aren't that many structures solved and the signal from sequence alignments is not reliable for antibody antigen.
Binding, yes. Recently, a paper from David Baker also came in.
We should, we should keep the questions.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah.
Hello ma'am, my question is to Shruti ma'am. Based on biochemical properties of protein, can one be able to draw solutions towards the AI challenges during simulation and docking challenge?
Is, the question is can AI do simulation?
No, my question is with help of biochemical properties, if I put that data to AI models and can I be able to solve the problem during docking like?
Okay, so that's an interesting thing and that people have thought of for a long time. Earlier, the machine learning models before deep learning methods came where you have to input the hydrophobicity or the charge of each residue and then do a machine learning model with these features and get a prediction.
Yes, ma'am.
The reason, one of the reason deep learning methods were so powerful is because you did, you didn't have to rely on these handcrafted manual features. You could just give the data which is the sequence and the method itself, the deep learning method itself would infer which features are important. And that's what these large language models of proteins are doing. And they believe that they are capturing all this hydrophobicity, charge, etcetera information, biophysical information and maybe even more. So, they are more powerful to answer your question than the biophysical features alone.
So, when I, for example, if I have a ligand A and I wanna dock it to my protein B, so if the physicochemical properties are, for example, are somewhat not, means a very, I'm sorry, I'll, may I ask you in a personal about it?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, thank you.
My question to Dr. Jamur Ghosh ma'am. Ma'am, to provide or promote precision or personalized healthcare services to the Indian population, what type of criteria should I follow?
Can you repeat, can you repeat once again?
To promote or to provide the precision or personalized medicine healthcare services to the Indian population, what type of criteria should I follow?
Uh, criteria, actually, the thing has to be set up first. As I have mentioned here, it's still, I mean, nascent state. So, we need to have those systems in work. That means when a patient comes in, you need to have those profiling information to be done first and then you can only go ahead with the personalized medication to the patient. So, that setup is coming up as I can see by discussing with the people here. So, maybe in due course of time, we will be able to figure out definitely. And cancer genomics is already there in the path labs. So, not only genomics, but as I have mentioned that it should be having multiomics information. So, that will lead towards more precise medication.
Thank you.
Hi, my question is for Lakshmi ma'am. So, hi, here, hi. So, do you think there is a set of problems in computational biology that inherently have a quantum advantage? Or has there any work going in this direction?
So, that's kind of the ongoing research work is to find a real problem that matters in, in real life, in life sciences and for which we have a real quantum advantage. So, there are some problems we, we see and we, it is reported in the archive paper that I had mentioned, you can look it up. So, we get some small advantages from machine learning and other things. Given the current quantum computers that exist today, they're going to get very powerful in another five years. So, we need to be ready for it because once they, once they hit us, we should, we should already be prepared to take all our problems there. I do know that there are problems that are meeting the classical bottlenecks, the classical computing bottlenecks and those are the ones that we are actually waiting for, that we can actually use in, with quantum computers. So, that was the kind of problems I was asking for. What are the problems where we are hitting classical bottlenecks? There are a few problems which, which have hit classical bottlenecks and.
So, you see, nowadays, people are sequencing genome for every patient, even for every single cell, right? And we know that assembly of genome is almost an hard problem, right? And if you have to solve, assemble the genomes, so many genomes so quickly, now you need quantum computers for sure. Then for docking as you asked, right? Even I was, I can code in quantum today. So, we have been trying to solve some quantum cost, like, you know, trying to solve certain Ising model like in quantum computing. So, so even docking, it's like finding the minimum energy state of electrons in just one configuration, that needs a lot of optimization, right, in quantum simulation. So, there quantum computing can help. And suppose you have like, if you have just one protein and one ligand and you have six degree of freedom, right? For every state, you need to calculate the minimum energy state. If you do it computationally in quantum modeling, it's gonna take a lot of time. But quantum computing will give it in just like point zero zero one second. Then you can possibly look for all the configurations. So, currently, as I told you that for drug, for many drugs, we don't know what are the possible binding proteins, right? So, for, you just, if you just pick just one drug and you want to find what are the proteins can bind to this single drug, right? Maybe fifteen thousand, twenty thousand potential partners and which may have like two, three binding groups and six degree of freedoms. So, you see billions of space search, billions of configurations to search for every single ligand. There you need quantum computing, right?
Okay, so he's a good ally, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Good quantum computing ally because.
Yeah, I mean, any problem that has duality in it, quantum computer would benefit. I mean, including AI in some cases as well.
Um, I'm going to be very cautious about what I will say, what quantum computing can. I mean, you're, you're free to speculate and, you know, be even more optimistic. The reason I'm saying that, I, I'm from IBM Research, IBM is doing a lot of hardware. We are invested in building these computers. So, I'm going to be very careful in saying what is going to make a difference.
Yeah, I understand your constraints, yes. Yeah, any, okay, short question.
Okay, so this is a, sort of, I'm trying to respond to the challenge which you posed.
Go ahead.
So, we, we just talked about that in many AI algorithms earlier, we would have handcrafted features and now AI itself learns the features. So, similarly, there are many algorithms where we have handcrafted heuristics. So, and which require a lot of domain knowledge, domain understanding. So, for example, yesterday Arigit mentioned various ideas through which he reduced the search space from billions or whatever that number was to few thousands, right? That required a lot of domain knowledge, I'm sure he went through a lot of learning through the process. So, what if, so since you asked about in the future, so what if few years down the line, we can have say, an AI system which, which is an idea generator and also in a tight loop, an evaluator of the idea so that whatever Arigit did can be done automatically through that AI? Because that domain knowledge can be learned through LLMs, they can go through all the papers which Arigit went through and they have, it has, has access to code. and they have, it has access to code, so it can learn all the-
Good, he's not around, yes.
That's why I'm taking his name.
Totally agree. So there is something called accelerated discovery and discovering at scale. And this is the idea of discovering at scale in the sense that you have, you automate discovery, like hypothesis generation. So discovery itself is automated. And indeed, the current AI systems are positioned to do such things. In IBM and I'm sure outside as well, there is an effort to automate discovery. This is exactly what you were saying, more or less, right? And that already is on traditional systems. When I say traditional, I mean non-quantum systems. So it is possible to have hybrid connections. So that is you have classical and quantum in a hybrid setting where right now quantum doesn't handle large amount of data. So right now it doesn't, so for a while it may not be able to. But it can handle computations very well. Well, if you, if you're able to position it as a quantum computing, just to understand the model and put it that. So you could have a hybrid model where the large amount of data and other things that you do in a classical sense. And I'm saying in the current, the way AI takes, everything that you said can be done in an AI setting. It is possible that you will have little components which is exploding in computations. And that you can sort of, that or any other characteristic, you can feed to a quantum computer, get the answer and have this hybrid system that helps in automating discovery or accelerating discovery, yeah.
Keep it short, huh?
You're saying that AI can generate hypotheses and then AI can test the hypothesis. Actually, that is already happening. See, in my lab, we are making one AI helper for every PhD student. And so you can just give one hundred, one hundred PDFs, right? It makes a knowledge graph, right? And then PhD, so basically suppose, for example, you give symptoms and then you ask which drugs should be given for this symptom. One paper, you have a disease and symptoms. Another paper, you have disease in the drugs and what are the pathways? So our system will, actually is working, it links all the PDFs, knowledge graph, it builds and then it is able to answer to you. So it can actually generate hypothesis that maybe this, this, this drug would work. It's working and, and we just used laboratories from Hugging Face and we are using the output as input. And of course, it can go to hallucination, that's what we are fixing right now. But it is happening in India.
Thank you. I think might scare the PhD students because then PhDs would be written by AIs and, you know, your guide will also be an AI assistant. So everything can go virtual and degrees can also be virtual in that case. Okay, I think we will close the session now. I think we have passed time and I'll thank the panel members. I hope you had a good, interesting session. Let's thank the speaker once again. Thank you so much.
Okay, that brings us to the conclusion of the event, right? So I, sure, so I have to thank a lot of people who made this event possible. So first I'll thank our Axis Bank Math and Computing Center sponsor for giving us the funds to fund your accommodation, food and all the logistics, right? So we had a fantastic lineup of speakers. I thank all the speakers, poster presenters for sharing your research here and giving fantastic talks, poster presentations and all the other participants for asking brilliant questions after every talk. Also, I have to thank the staff members from the Axis Bank Center, our CD, Computational Data Science Department, CDS, the faculty hall staff, also the student volunteers, if, if they are here, I request you to stand up, please. So can we give them a hand? So yeah, so with all this help, our job, like as organizers, we just say, we just, our job is very easy. So I thank all the students for their hard work.
Please the students write chat GPT.
Yes, please, let's not do that. So chat GPT will not, at least not help us run these conferences. So that's for sure.
Yeah, I mean, nobody gets to thank Chirag who did all the work. So please, yeah. And Sanchit also, who is co-organizer, yeah. And it was a very, you know, engaging and exciting two days for us. I'm sure you have enjoyed the conference. Last year, we had a feedback that we want to, that we should scale it up. We have had lots of participants who are coming to the second session of BD Bio and they have also promised to come to the third session of BD Bio. We are excited that, you know, we can proudly scale it up and we look forward to have you again the next.
So on behalf of all the participants, I, I want to thank all the organizers of curating such a big collection of talks and I think all of them enjoyed it with all the questions and so on. Thank you all.
Thank you, thank you. So please collect your certificates, they are printed outside and I think we'll, please join us for-
Yeah, and one, so we'll be circulating a feedback form and getting your feedback is very important for us to, if you have positive feedback, also please share because that's important to renew our funds for next year's event. So please share your feedback, we'll be circulating the feedback form today evening. Thank you. Yeah, so please join us for Haiti outside, thank you.